Okay, um, thank you for coming out tonight and welcome back to our board meeting. We're just screening convening after an executive session related to superintendent evaluation. And Secretary Doxy, could you call the role, please?
Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Lenny Schruth.
Here.
Gillian Nguyen.
Yes.
And I am.
Thank you. Um, first up tonight, uh, we are recognizing those who, uh, students who have been, uh, reps from Oakhamus High School. Uh, we have, um, first up Xavier Rogers. Come on up, please.
Well, my.
Thanks. And next up, we have Harshita Rajaram. Uh, and next up, we have now will be joined. Uh, we also have a certificate for, uh, James Sharp, but he was unable to be here tonight. So really want to thank our students, um, for coming and representing, uh, the high school, uh, keeping us informed, asking great questions of us. Uh, we really learn a lot, both from your reports and from your, your questions. So really appreciate your presence and dedication to, to be here.
And just on behalf of the superintendent and our administrators and community, wanted to thank each of you for the thoughtfulness in which you've approached this work. You've set the bar very high. You've not just represented your lens, but you've reached out to the student body and brought in their perspective, which is very appreciated. And you'd help the adults understand the student experience here, which is why we exist. So thank you for doing that work. It is needed and appreciated because sometimes the adults try to solve the student problems when the students know what the best solutions are for them because you live those experiences every day. So that difference will be felt for years to come. And, um, that leadership that you've taken is remarkable. So thank you.
Yep. Sure. Uh, there's a request to find out where the seniors might be, uh, going to school next fall. I don't know if this, this is a great time to tell the world.
If you have a decision.
I'll be attending the University of Michigan. I'm going to study philosophy, politics and economics and hopefully minoring in, um, energy science and policy and Spanish.
I'm going to MSU, go green. And, um, I'm, uh, majoring in marketing and digital storytelling.
Interesting. Thank you again. Thank you. Thank you. Um, next up, uh, we have a discussion move forward. Superintendent.
Yeah. So we have, um, from Ridian Township tonight. We have both Dan Opsmer, our deputy township manager and director of public works, and Casey Hart, uh, project engineer for the department of public works to talk tonight about a easement request on the Bennett Woods area. So thank you for, uh, coming this evening and we'll bring you to the screen and I can, um, share some, some slides to help illustrate our discussions as well for the boards. Here, screen. Yeah, we'll have to have Mr. Brown come out. There he goes.
Which? Oh, yeah. Yeah, for sure. Yeah. All right. Yes.
Great. Well, thank you, board members. Again, my name is Casey Hart with the engineering department at the township and, um, here this evening to discuss three different easement requests that we have on the Bennett Woods, uh, school property. So, um, I think John, if you can go to file or maybe I can do it. Let's start.
Yep.
Uh, I'm going to the first page, please. This should be an aerial exhibit.
See, you tell me which.
At the very first page. Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Yep.
So I've got, um, this aerial exhibit here that, you know, has the three different easement types overlained. So starting with the blue one, that's, uh, for water. We have an existing water main and fire hydrants on the property. Uh, we are proposing to get an easement that encompasses around this existing infrastructure. Yeah, it's typical, um, standard practice for us to have, uh, easements around any township infrastructure that we have on a third party owned property. So likely this was skipped, um, during the development process when the school was built. So we're just retroactively, uh, getting that. The second easement that I've got shown is, um, here in yellow. It's a, uh, warning siren easement and it's located just west of the main driveway entrance to the school. So that's, uh, maintained by the fire department and it's, uh, mostly for severe weather alerts to the community. The last easement type that we're requesting is the pathway easements and the, um, pink hatches here. So on the, um, main driveway entrance portion, we are proposing a pathway that covers the existing seven foot concrete, um, sidewalk. And it was just constructed on the property and we didn't have an easement for it. The other easement, um, is more interesting. This is right at the driveway that, uh, enters into the Oakhamus Public Schools bus garage. So there is an existing section of pathway in this area and, um, it crosses over the driveway and it extends about 220 feet further west and terminates like right in front of the existing wetland, kind of leading to nowhere. Uh, so what, this is an existing gap in our pathway network. And we would like to propose a project to fill in this, this gap and, um, provide, you know, a better safe walking route to the school. So yeah, right where John's pointing, that's where the pathway currently terminates. It's just right in front of that wetland. So what we're proposing is a pathway project that consists of a boardwalk. And John's got the site plan pulled up here. So if we're starting on the right side of the page, we've got the, um, bus garage driveway entrance. We're going to construct a seven foot wide concrete pathway until we get to the wetland. Then we have about 335 linear feet of boardwalk. It's going to be eight foot wide. Um, and we're going to terminate the boardwalk, boardwalk right before the driveway entrance, the Schultz veterinary clinic. And we'll be tying into the existing pathway network, kind of right at that driveway entrance. Um, so this project, we met with, um, John, the director of safety, director of operations and the principal, they're all in support of it. One thing to know also is that further west of this, um, Schultz driveway, there's a big, um, residential development that's happening right in this area. It's called the Silver Relief subdivision. So likely late this fall or early winter, there's going to be residents that are living here. So it's very crucial that we get this constructed and have a accessible walking path to the school. Um, as far as timeline, we are looking to construct it starting this summer. We are waiting on one Eagle permit. So that's the state environmental commission. And currently our plans are out to bid, they're due at the end of the month. Looking to construct it in the summer, hopefully finish in the fall before the school starts. That is the plan. And as far as funding, we are going to pay for it with the township mileage, uh, funds as well as Schultz kicked in, um, some money for the pathway along their frontage. So it will be at no cost to the, the school district. So with that, I'll pause and I'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Questions from trustees? Yeah, trustee Burns.
So I guess just for clarity, so for the, the water easement and the siren easement, the, that's for, um, that's an easement for things that are already there essentially, right? Just so that everyone's clear.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Kavanaugh.
I'm curious about the timeline. Yeah. So we're, we're planning to construct this summer. Um, ideally, I think it'll start in July. Like I said, we're waiting on one permit from Eagle and they can take some time. It's likely going to be about a two month construction timeline. So if all goes well, we could, you know, get that done before school season starts. But if not, we've talked with the director of operations to kind of, you know, plan out a timeline of, when the buses are coming in and out, we can restrict our contractors from using that driveway entrance. So. Yep.
Just want to thank you for working with, um, the principal there and the superintendent, uh, before he came to us. It's always helpful. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, there's no other questions?
So the board would see action.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Um, we'd actually like to move up the, um, student reports just because we started a little late. So want to respect their time. Um, so, um, with that, I would turn it over to, um, Harshida and Penelope.
Hi, thank you for having us. So this past week, we've had AP exams last week and this week's the last week we're having them. And a large portion of our student body is taking these exams. The location is at the gym and we don't have bells, which is really good, making it easier for students. And the only issues we've been having are with internet due to a lot of the exams being converted to online. So with a bunch of people taking them in groups, we've had minor delays, but nothing super major. A couple of the classes have gone on field trips such as Cedar Point Top Golf and High Caliber. And these are just fun ways to end the school year and celebrate AP exams coming to an end. The new class NHS members have been inducted on May 6th and senior awards were given on May 8th. The boys lacrosse team had a game on Friday to sponsor Eli's project. And a lot of, a lot of sports teams this year have been having games for mental health awareness, which I think is really important for like the student body. This spring is one of our busiest seasons for sports. And now it's all starting to wrap up with senior nights being over and or impending. And we've had a lot of athletic success this year.
There's also going to be an event on May 16th, um, this Friday, which is called Sock Out Suicide. And this is an event that's led by action, um, with, uh, they're employing the community to wear crazy socks as well as students, um, super bright colored socks. And the goal is starting conversations about mental health, um, and suicide and getting help if you need it. Um, the idea is by wearing socks, you're pledging to get help if you need it. Um, urge others to get help and just support everyone. Um, so we appreciate any participation from the community in that event. Um, looking forward this week, we have all of our final music performances. So next week, or sorry, tomorrow is going to be the, um, choir concert at 7:00 PM at the high school. And then the following day at 7:00 PM will be the, um, orchestra concert. And then on Thursday, it'll be the last band concert. So, um, these are obviously open to the whole community and we appreciate people coming to support and see all of the hard work that we put into our fine arts this year. Prom tickets have closed without exception. Um, just as a reminder, the prom is, um, going to be at Eagle Eye Golf Resort this Saturday. And the theme is old Hollywood, only juniors and seniors are allowed and guests from outside the school are permitted who are also juniors and seniors. Um, the Oakhamus High School Parent Group Board offers a post-prom after the dance. And this year it's going to include raffles, big prizes, food and drink, um, inflatables, mini golf, karaoke and more. So this is a super fun, um, activity after prom that's hosted at the high school. And next week is going to be our seniors last week and Tuesday is our last day of classes. The 21st is the senior project where we'll be, um, distributing through the community, doing various, um, community service projects that we signed up for. And then the 22nd as our last day of high school. There's going to be a new tradition starting this year, which is going to replace, um, our senior run out, which is the, um, graduate parade. And this is required for all students, but we're pretty excited about it. There's been a great positive response from the students about it. And we will be busing to and walking through Chipewa, Kinnawha and then our elementary school choice. So this is sponsored by our student council advisors as well as our administration. And it's going to be a new tradition that's starting this year. And it's a, just a sentimental way, um, to end our high school experience and give closure to our great experience in the district. The commencement ceremony will be held on May 29th at the Brezlin Center. And that'll wrap up my high school career. So, um, as you can see, this is an incredibly busy and fun time of year with all the, um, events and things. It's fast paced. I just wanted to thank the board members and, um, everyone for allowing us to be representatives for years and, um, giving voice to the students. It's been a great experience. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions, uh, for our student reps?
Yeah, Siri.
I had the good fortune to go to the, um, uh, senior award ceremony. And, um, one of, uh, Harshida mentioned the AP exams and I, I, I reached out to Dr. Kim's lady just asking. So it was 1119 AP exams we're taking, uh, this year at Oakhamus High School. So really amazing work being done. I heard that they might tentatively be, uh, renaming that the Penelope Joyce, uh, award ceremony. Um, our own Penelope, uh, a lot of congratulations, a lot of wonderful, well deserved, uh, awards. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you again, um, for, for representing OHS so well. Really appreciate your service and, um, you're free to go or stay for more. Thank you. Hey, uh, next up, we have a discussion move forward, uh, with technology purchases, uh, super, superintendent hood.
Yes, Director Isom is here again to provide, um, a quick overview of some fiber upgrades. We want to be, um, on to improve our systems here in the district. And that's going to be funded through the 2020 bond. So good evening, Director Isom. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. Um, thank you, board, for taking the time to, uh, hear this proposal. And, um, just want to let you know it is a part of the 2022 bond. Um, so I'm requesting approval for fiber upgrades to our network. Um, and to continue to strengthen our fiber network that we have, our infrastructure. Um, the funding again is by the 2022 bond. Um, we're looking to enhance our network, um, the fiber that runs from here to the new school, we're adding, um, strands. And then we're going to continue on and go to the high school, um, to add additional strands. And the reason for that, um, we have a disaster recovery room being, um, formed at the high school in the back room of our MDF. Um, at that point though, we are out of strands for fiber. So what we want to do is backfill our network and utilize, um, some of the components that we have that we're in a consortium with, um, the ISD. Part of that is, um, another ISP provider. So we pay, um, for StarNet, which, um, is another ISP provider through Zale. Um, so we're going to utilize that, which we already have here in this building over next to us, along with ACD, which is our primary, but that's going to become our backup as soon as we get these extra strands in, um, of fiber. So once we do that, we should have a, if we have an issue with ACD like we did the other day, it was on a Sunday, so it didn't affect anyone. But if they go down, down the road off campus here, even though we have network and everything's up on our end and there's no, um, problems with our technology, we still will fail on going out to the internet, kind of like your cable, um, TV. So this would backfill that. So if ACD went down, our backbone would then become out to the internet, this Zale through our disaster recovery in the high school. So long story short, we're going to pull a new strand all the way to the high school, new cut, uh, fiber, multiple strands in it. We're going to split off, have some for the new building, split off some for, uh, Bennett Woods. They're completely out. So we're trying to future proof, uh, Bennett Woods, future proof Hiawatha. We're going to pull some down to Hiawatha. Um, and then the high school itself is going to get some strands. So it's like, we're looking for the future and we're going to give some resiliency to our network. Um, so we went out to a couple of vendors who asked for quotes. We had three quotes come in. Um, I'm looking for us to utilize challenger technology. Um, they weren't the lowest, but they weren't the highest. Um, they're a super good reliable, um, company. They came in very detailed on everything, including some stuff that we need to take care of. Even though they're going to pull us new, we need to take care of some boxes in the ground and so forth. Um, so they really did a thorough job, but they are our vendor of, um, use here that I use quite a bit. We have the fiber on telephone lines running all around the streets here, but we don't own those telephone lines. We own the fiber. So anytime there's any work that consumers does, they run, um, a process called make ready. They got to make sure it's in compliance and that compliance changes all the time. So even though we put it on in 1992 or four, it was at a certain height. Now they're, if they're going to go do some work out there, um, it's at a new height. So challenger technology takes care of all that for us. They're on, on a list that gets the information from, um, consumers, just like we do. Um, and they call me, they let me know what's going on and we, we make it available, um, for them to utilize. So in saying all of that, I'm asking for, um, you guys to approve that quote for 128,582 dollars and 90 cents. I'm adding a 10% contingency of 12,858 dollars and 29 cents for a total of 141, 441 and 19 cents. Um, that came in under what was allocated in, um, the bond. Um, we had 150,000 put aside for WAN slash fiber. Um, and we're hoping that, you know, you'll approve this so we can move forward with it. The contingency, um, we're hoping we stay under that. The fiber is actually comes from out of country. Um, but they right now have it locked in at a certain price for us. So we're pretty good until the end of the month. So hopefully this will come in. Again, they're not the lowest, but, um, they are very consistent and they do great work for us. I am very confident that they continue to do good work for us. Any questions?
I just, one quick question. I, I understand that, uh, Challenger's done good work and comprehensive. Just curiosity, how much, uh, higher were they than the lowest bid?
Um, so the lowest bid was an inconsistent bid. Um, so they came in without everything on it and we went back to them and I haven't heard anything. So they were about eight to nine grand lower than the highest bid. And the other bid really didn't count because it didn't even come close. And that's why, because they didn't have everything we asked for.
So was the lowest full bid?
The lowest was not a full bid.
Yeah, yeah, but, but challenger.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yes, absolutely. Yep, 100%.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And again, this will be on our next.
Again, this will be on our next agenda for approval. Thank you, Director Isom. Okay, uh, next up, we have a presentation on the spring assessment data and MTSS in action, superintendent hood.
Yeah, so we have, uh, Assistant Superintendent Bailey and Director Sli here to prevent her, to present our, uh, spring benchmark data assessment and our MTSS work in action. Mr. Brown, come out.
What's the magic here?
He's waiting for me to click on the right button. That's what he's waiting for.
Okay, good evening. Thanks for having us here. Um, we're going to go over our spring data, um, to show you where we were, um, with our goals and where we're ending the year and what we're looking forward, forward to next year. So I'm sorry, I don't know why this slide got, when you come into this view, the S got messed up. This is the work that we've been working on for two years. So we had, um, a goal setting process to say, if we're doing initiatives, it would lead to an increase in our student growth, which would lead to an increase in our student proficiency. So we need to determine, and I don't have the information for you tonight, but this is the work that we're going to be digging into in the summer. Now that we have two cycles of the data of our state assessment and, uh, benchmark assessment, state assessment, benchmark assessment, state assessment. We're going to be digging into that. It's a cumbersome process. Um, and we don't have a, a data analysis team here, but I did talk with, um, trustee Burns. And I asked if I could pick his brain and work within the summer to start piecing all of this and pulling all that raw data together in ways that we can then have a better analysis of what's happening, um, with all of the pieces together. So know that it's not for now, but I'm excited for the work moving forward, um, and more to come on that. So we have our spring data, our benchmark assessment goals. And it's for NWA, our benchmark assessment, and we're focusing on growth. So again, what we're looking for is how many students, what's the percentage of students that are meeting their expected growth? So as a reminder, every student, when they take the assessment in the fall, they have a designated number that's set for their growth based on their grade level, where they are, where they tested. And that is nationally normed. So they could have nine points for their expected growth. They could have two points. They could have 17 points. It's individual to the student. So we want them to meet their expected growth. And we know that students that are, um, below what the norm is for their grade level, we want them to exceed that projected growth so that we are continuing to close that, um, that gap. So here's our data. So we now have three years. So you're going to see a few, um, trend pieces, um, just a little bit because we're just starting to gather that. So you can see that for literacy, that's the top number. As a reminder, in the 22, 23 year, that was K through eight. In the 23, 24 year, we added ninth grade. And then in the 24, 25 year, we've added 10th grade. That is as far as it goes. We're not going to be bumping up to anything else. It bumps out at that 10th grade. So you can see that while we have continued making significant increases on that expected growth, um, except for the last year, we're at 54 and then we're at 53. Um, we didn't hit our target. Our target was 62.5%. Those were the, um, goals that were established by the MTSS committee. So when we're looking at the data, what would we think is it a reasonable goal within a year to achieve? We looked at, oh, go ahead.
And it did go down from, so you're, we're looking from here to here. This was just our goal. Um, so this is actual data, actual data. It went down a little bit.
Yes. We saw an increase in our math data, however. So when we started, we were at the, um, 36% of the students made their expected growth. We then jumped to, um, a little over 58% and now we're, um, close to 65%. So we still didn't meet that, um, goal that we had set, but we're seeing those continued increases. So then this is breaking down for the whole year of that expected growth based on different, um, groups of our learners. One trend that we have seen, we saw it in the fall, we saw it in the winter and we saw it again this year is for our multilingual students. We see that they're continuing to exceed the expected growth average. So that first one is for all the students, that's what the expected growth was. And for that group of learners, our multilingual students, we saw it starting with, um, literacy. And now we're seeing both for literacy and math that they're exceeding that all. Um, that is a pattern we have not seen until this year. So, um, one of the initiatives that we have started is Psyop training. And that is Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. That's for all teachers. Um, so we have our multilingual teachers that have additional training. The Psyop training is for all, from our preschool teachers to take it, um, a science teacher, a fifth grade teacher. Anyone can take this. It's best practices for making sure that we're teaching, um, our multilingual students. And given the number that we have in our district, it's really, it's going to be an all. It can't be just for some. These students are in all of our classes. And so that would be one of the indicators that this continued training for educators is showing that it's having some success. Um, at the end of this year, we will have 75 of our educators that have gone through the training. So, um, each year we're adding about, uh, 30 to 50 educators, um, throughout the year in the training.
And, and just to add with, with that group of learners, um, uh, with the team of teachers, we've been taking a more methodical and intentional look at, at how we're running our programming. And, um, I would say that this trend is starting to show that we're doing a better job of identifying what level of support students need and trying to match up our resources with what the, the students need.
So we wanted to look at, that's more of that snapshot of time just from this year. But now that we have three of the school years, when we look at the data for different, um, groups of students, what does it look like? Are we actually closing that, those gaps that we saw? Um, some of you, not all of you, but you might remember, uh, we looked at state assessment trend data maybe a year or two ago. And when we looked at it over the last like 10 years. And when we looked at it over the last like ten years, we could see just parallel lines for some of our demographic groups that there was no close of any sort of um anyway. And so we're really looking, trying to look at this benchmark assessment data, which is different than our achievement data, but looking to see what does that look like for them, different demographic groups of students meeting their um expected growth. So we can see this is for math and the percentage of students. So we see that we're having an increase. So that's good. Um, and that we can see, we're starting to see some of the lines um blur together. It's kind of hard to see the orange line for our district average is pretty much smack dab on top of the green line that's representing our white students. So um, there are two lines there, but they're pretty much the exact same. And then this is um it's the percentage of students meeting expected growth in math. Um, this only has two years on it. So the first year that we did NWA, we didn't have it mapped. That's targeting all of the different um connectors with our student data system. And so that's why we're looking at two years and not three years for this. So two years, kind of hard to say what we're seeing. It's just from last year to this year. Uh, we can see that the yellow line is representing our students that have an IEP for special education. We see that's increasing. Um. But we also see the red line representing students that are economically economically disadvantaged is decreasing. So that's one that we need to dig into to identify. Is that for just that year or is there more going on to that?
Sure. Um, again, overall, if we just sort of glance at this, things are tending to move in the in a positive direction, um specifically for Asian black or African-American students or um Hispanic or Latino students. Um, I think we need to interrogate a little bit uh what's going on. Um, just for our di- district average, um dropped a little bit as as did um for our white students. So that would be a a point to kind of take a closer look at. And then if you go to the um next slide, we still see um our the red line that's going up, the only line that's going up right now um is our uh multilingual students. So we're seeing that trend kind of across the board. Um, but we see these other dips in English language arts and um I I think uh hi hypothesis I would like to put forward is that um there's been extensive professional learning uh for our teachers in Orton, Gillingham and Letters. Uh correct me if I'm wrong. Um, so that that's been over the course of the last few years. And I would say that um our our teachers have a lot of great knowledge that they're now starting to put into practice. And I don't know if you've ever tried a new skill, um but sometimes you know, it takes a little bit of practice, some extra free throws, so to speak, um to make sure that you know, you're using all the strategies in the right way. So I I would I would anticipate that these lines will start to go up in the next year or two, given that uh you know, it's a it's a new thing. We have a little implementation dip um and and we will see.
Yeah, and I was just going to say that we are finishing up on um the literacy grant that we had, which is training every single teacher pre-K through fifth grade in the science of reading. And so that has been throughout this whole year. So as we talk about each professional development day, they have gone deep into the science of reading and what does it look like? And understanding everything from phonemic awareness and phonics all the way up to comprehension and language acquisition and how do we blend it all together? If it was easy, we would all just not have to talk about this because we would all be proficient and everything would be there. It's very complex, complicated work. And again, we're working with human beings. And so our teachers are doing an amazing job. Um, and so I just want to say, when we saw this data, I know for a lot of um, a lot of our buildings and educators, it was kind of like, oh, we've put our heart and soul into this. We're surprised by this. And so I just want to say publicly for any teacher that's watching. Um, that's okay. This is one data point. These are students. Like, we're going to continue persevering. Our coaching model is great. We're going to continue supporting our educators to support our students um with this work. So I think that's just important, an important message to put out there. Uh, sometimes it can limit us to try new things when we feel like, oh, what if we try new things and this happens? If we don't try new things, we'll always have the same results we've always had. So I just want to commend the educators that are out of their comfort zone, doing small group instruction, doing differentiation every day. It is very, very challenging work and they continue at it every day. So um so this is where we are today, but it's just for today and I look forward to what that looks like in the future.
One of these days, it's going to be a face plant with all of these cords here. Um, I second all of what uh Stacy just said for sure, like I I I I think that teaching is one of the, I mean, if not one of the most complicated jobs in the world, like it is like hard. And you've got so many variables coming at you. And I I think our our staff is doing a fantastic job. And these are just, these are just moments in time. Um, and it's not telling the whole story. Uh, just as the our social emotional screener that we are giving, we have been giving three times a year um to students in grades three through twelve, um just to ta- uh kind of, it's just a snapshot, how how students are feeling at that moment in time. Um, and just to see if there's any students that are um you know, experiencing like something's going on, this might be a piece of information that helps us help them or it might not be. Um, again, we we take this snapshot with all the other factors like, you know, we actually talk to the kids and find out how they're doing. So um, we've in all of these administrations of the the BASK, um, we see there's not a whole lot of variation in how things are going, which is great because this blue is kids are are feeling okay. Um, and and there's nothing that indicates they're having any sort of um struggles that they might need help with. So um and we're working on taking this information. I know it like stresses parents out and 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 our counselors out. Um, we've been working diligently with our partners from MDH H M D H H S, uh Harvard's Government Performance Lab and Ingam SD to figure out how to utilize this information i- in a more timely and a more um streamlined fashion to connect kids as part of our referral process, which I'll talk about. After we get done talking about this pre- presentation. And these are are just some of the initiatives. I don't know. I had some notes. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about some of the initiatives that kind of um will tell you how the social and emotional health of our students is um after we're done with this presentation.
So I just wanted to note, um, so for educators, it talks about the OG and the letters training, like I just said. So I want us to make sure that when we're thinking about initiatives that worked, we sometimes think about student data, but that's kind of one of the later things. So what we're seeing is shifts in instructional practices, shifts in instructional conversations about what's happening. Um, so that is really telling of the professional learning that's been happening. And then we have this district's um computer science committee, so I wanted to talk to you more about that. We are in year two as a district of having um a computer science grant ninety-nine B. Um, because Liz and I love letters and numbers. Um, and so it is, it has data that's involved with that. So you don't know because you haven't seen any because this is our first full year that we've had it. So it's Project Tomorrow that we partner with. So it surveys our teachers on um what's their understanding of computational thinking. Um, we were required to go through the script training, which is, this is a mouthful. So here we go. Strategic Computer Science for All Resource and Implementation Planning Tool. So we did that a year or two ago and we did the training. We identified our short and long-term goals in computer science. Part of that was a continued goal for the Project Tomorrow data and it just came out that they were doing the post survey. So we should get the data back on that. And it's really, again, trying to shift the mindsets of how are we using computational thinking every day, day to day, when we're teaching our students, not just in standalone classes. So what does that mean? I'll give you an example. A teacher reached out to me today because part of that grant, we have money set aside for subs for them to have time to work on the things to implement and then debrief with the coach. So it's a science teacher who is wanting to add computational thinking into a weather unit and looking at how can we use different technologies for the students to think about how do we come up with the variables and indicators that are into weather patterns? That was probably like a very basic. She would probably be thinking it's way more complex than that. But just an example of that's a fifth grade classroom. And so how do we start having some of that? So you haven't heard much about that, but it's going on behind the scenes. Um, so more to come on that. We can go to the next slide. Wanted to give a quick update on our MTSS committee with our beautiful diamond, making sure we're meeting all students. Wanted to kind of highlight that green interior for tier one is all. So sometimes when we're talking about our interventions working, if not, what are we doing? If we have that green section and we don't really have eighty percent of our students that are having their needs met there, then we're kind of out of balance. Um, so we really have been focusing a lot of what I've talked about for the literacy. Um, computational thinking is really supporting that tier one, that those best instructional practices for all. We are also are doing an inventory of our um assessments and you'll have some of that data coming to you in June. Um, we're also focusing on process maps, forty-six members on this committee. So I want you to think about in our district, we have forty-six educators from different buildings, different levels, different roles. Five full days this year, they met in this room to do all of this work. It is like work. It's not a sit and get. It's um some people in this room are there. It's uh intense work of the committee. And so I just want to um acknowledge all that they've done to really continue moving us forward in that systems. When we talk about together, it takes time to get together. It's not something that happens overnight. And so that, I think, is a good example of what that together looks like. Um, I put a link there. I don't know if you click on that, John, if it's going to go to anything because we um we added to the website too. Okay, so if you scroll up, we now have a MTSS um section on our website. And if you scroll down a little bit more, we have the Parent Guardian Handbook on MTSS. So if um we have people out there that want to learn more because they can't get enough of it, um, the handbook is there that was again developed by the MTSS committee. And then there's an internal copy for our educators as well. So all of that's there. Um, so just again, trying to make all the information more accessible. Okay. And then continuing to think about, I've talked about some of these in um past presentations. One thing I wanted to mention today, universal accommodations. This was our implementation year. Uh, we surveyed uh all the teachers to gather their feedback, what was being used, how was it going, what do we need to do? And so um the leadership team went through all of that feedback. So thank you, hundreds of responses um to cultivate that and revise so that in year two, we can be more successful and make some of these accommodations um easier for our educators to implement with the students.
Can I stop about that?
Yes, go ahead.
Just two things I wanted to point out. Um, from for our K four SEL curriculum was the first year of implementation of everyday speech. Uh, we collected implementation data from our teachers and counselors to figure out what was working, what isn't working as well as we would like it to be. So next year, we've fine tuned a few things and there will be increasing the number of lessons next year and continuing to um share the share the workload with the counseling uh staff as well as the teachers and that has been um and then so next year, we'll start collecting um student data to see how how engaged students are in the curriculum. And the other uh big thing is um we will be, we've been working on some guidance for grading of students who are multilingual learners, um knowing that it's hard as a teacher, especially a high school teacher, like I've got a student who is new to English, how do I grade them? Um, so we've we're going to be providing guidance and gathering feedback throughout the year to make tweaks to that as well, but that'll be starting in the fall.
If you want to go to the last slide. So some things that are coming up, we still have one more district MTSS committee where um we've mentioned before, we use the practice profile, which is through the Michigan Department of Education and really examining the system as a whole. So we'll be monitoring ourselves to see where we are with all of those components. Um, and then we'll be looking at the data to identify um updated goals for next year and making sure that when we start thinking about what our professional development will be, we know the strategic plan is coming. So we're going to kind of put a a pin in the information we have on that and then start thinking about what those district and building goals would be um initially. And then we can fine tune them when we come back in the fall. And in June, you have another presentation coming for you, from me, on um our intervention data. So we've been gathering the interventions that our students are using. And so I will be sharing that information with you in June.
Thank you very much uh for the great information and presentation. Uh, questions for trustee trustee Doxy?
Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to hearing more in June. Um, one thing, thank you for lifting the MTSS Parent Guardian Handbook. Um, just a suggestion, it might be helpful for um a little blurb for our administrators to add it in the newsletters, just a reminder that we have that resource available. Um, can you share? So and maybe that's for in June, when you talk about interventions, but steps that are taken to support students whose growth has plateaued um and their achievement is maintained. Obviously, we've, you know, provide supports on the other end, but what about those just? They're doing well, but they're just right there.
Yeah, so that's one of the main reasons that we went to NWA. And so when we have our data meetings, our data meetings are looking at all of our students. So who needs a little bit more on either end? And so um Jennifer Eddy is our district gifted and talented coordinator and she works with instructional coaches and their teams to identify what else could be done. So she has a internal website that has lots of enrichment and extensions that teachers can access. Um, and sometimes it's trying something and then seeing what works. What we want to make sure is that each student is making their growth, which is a easier said than done task. But I know that during our building data meetings, all students are talked about in trying to get out of that plateau if that's happening. And I will say, continuing to look at NWA as a tool to identify what information is next for the student um and really digging deeper into that assessment to identify what is it that would get the student to the next area of growth. So it has three different bands with that and looking at what's coming up next. Again, still working and growing in that area. But that's why we chose the tool because we knew it would continue growing with us.
Thank you.
And also um i- in those data meetings, uh, yes, we're talking about NWA, but also some of the other factors that might be going on in a student's life because I feel like I might have been one of those students who was just kind of like phoning in it, you know? Just uh kind of just like this. And i- if there had been maybe not necessarily gifted and talented intervention, but like maybe having a talk with the counselor or connecting me with a club that I didn't know was available might help with some of that growth as well. So that's all part of the data meeting is is we're looking at the whole child and not just the academic piece.
Yeah, I I mean, and even if if they plateau, it doesn't mean that they're not an A student. But again, it's like, what? If if there's anything additional, right, we can support. And just one last comment, thank you for um because I I initially had a like, what's going on here? Your comment about um our staff and the PD that we've provided in literacy and to see the slide with the data that, again, it takes time. And so I do look forward to seeing our, seeing the shift, right, in our uh progression and supporting our students in literacy. So thank you.
Are there questions? Trustee Sresta.
Um, so I have a couple of questions. And one of the question is, so I know um we provide after-school tutoring, summer school tutoring, summer tutoring. Again, um, I'm just curious if there are barriers that prevent students from staying after school because they have to take the bus. How are we providing that support? Because it's, I am really, um, it's great that we have so many services and support for the students. But if they cannot access them, I'm concerned that it's almost um not having, it's like not having the support, right? And um
Can I can I answer that one? Oh, can I answer that one? Um, so as a reminder, that is all grant funded. So we, the S R funds ran out. And so we have another grant twenty-three G, which allowed us to have after-school tutoring this year and summer program. So again, this is still grant funded of what we are able to do. Um, some of our buildings have gone to, uh, we have transportation at the elementary. Um, some of our buildings have gone to virtual tutoring in addition to or in conjunction with. Um, in the summer, we have both in-person and virtual tutoring options. So families can decide what might be the best um for their child. So uh we try to remove all the barriers that could exist so that it's um an opportunity for all students. Uh, but we are limited by the constraints within the grant of how much we have to go around. But we still have grant money for this summer, so I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. Um, so the other question is, even though I can see um the students, African-American and Hispanic students also making great improvements per data. Um, we're still behind. So are there any specific reasons? Have we? Have we been able to dig through the data to see what can we support those students?
In addition to what we already are doing.
Like, what are the reasons we continue to see this gap?
Like a further root cause analysis? We're hoping to be able to do that this summer to really dig into the data um to identify what those reasons are. We look at each, do you wanna speak on? Go ahead. I can see you.
Yeah, yeah, yes, we need to look, we need to do a deeper dive into the data and and really get into the finer points of things. I I do um, I would say there's some systemic uh oppression happening within our system. So on top of kinda looking at those numbers and trying to sort things out, I think we need to stay, take a step back. And I think we're doing uh, we're, we're starting to really do that in a systematic way with uh the MTSS committee. Kind of like we're, we're doing all the process mapping and trying to figure out like, what are the steps that we take to to go from student to support that they need? And um removing barriers and noticing like, oh, this, we do it this way over here, but this way for, you know, this other school or student. So really taking a look at some of those systemic issues that we've built into the system that are inadvertently disadvantaging some students over others. So um, I think, yes, looking at, you know, number crunching and all of that, I think we can do a a more precise job of that. Once um, we get some support with that, but also some of the process things. We're do, we're doing the same thing with the multilingual uh teachers and and kind of going through their programming and trying to take a look at. Our own practices and how how we're connecting kids to different things. And that's a little more complicated and um messy at times. Cuz it's not as clear cut as like, oh, oh, we just need to change this textbook, right? We might need a way that change the way we structure a day or approach a topic or things like that.
Thank you. So I, I also look forward to the June the um data and also. Learning what are the systemic oppressions, as you mentioned, that we have within our O P S system? That's preventing African American and Hispanic students to continue to grow at the district average level. Thank you.
Trustee Phelps.
Thank you very much. Really enjoyed it. I love looking at the multi-year and W A stuff. You know, I remember the discussion when we started in W A and I love seeing the fruits of our labor. Um, it seems like we're learning a lot is what I'm learning from you, which is great. My question is related to the basket assessment. So. I remember we had something previous to that and I'm, I guess maybe I'm struggling to figure out what we're learning from this. Um, I I I see a lot of just the same, well, sorry, I see a lot of the same data every year, you know? And it seems like our students are generally doing great and which is wonderful. And I think student mental health, you know, is very, I don't, and I don't wanna minimize that cuz it's extremely important. I just wanna understand what we're learning from this and if this tool, you know, what meaningful data and information is this tool providing us?
Right, um, and I can get you more detailed information about that once I've. Been working with, as I mentioned, those partners. Um, they've had, so our I S D partner. Is yeah, what's Kelly Trout's title?
Data.
She's like a data system. Yes. So she's a data person who's been helping kind of dig in and like. I can get pretty basic, like surface level information and I can get a spreadsheet. And I'm not a, I don't, I'm not a, I'm a data geek in in light, I think, right? I'm not a, that's not my expertise. So um, I've been, we've been helped or they've been helping me understand what's going on. So we can um. I'd say we're not there yet in terms of getting the information out that we, that we, that would be super helpful in terms of like broader patterns across the district. Um, with regard to, let's say, gender or race or age um or uh economically that disadvantaged versus not. But they're, they're able to, and also. I know I'm not making a whole lot of sense here, but um, there's also, so that, there's that piece of just sort of the general like scores. But we can also boil it down, we can pick certain uh questions um that are related to some of the other things that we're trying to figure out. I know you've talked about that panorama survey, like do students feel safe at school? Uh, do they have people that, do they have adults that they can talk to at school? So we can, we can go into those questions and and pull out like bigger trend data out of that. And um, fine tune some of our S L programming through that. I would say we're not there yet. Uh, but I think we're pretty close to understanding like what we can pull out that would be helpful. I will say that um. Chipua is already doing a little bit more intensive dive in than the the district as a whole. So um, I've actually talked to Lori Missoula a lot about what she's doing and um. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's valuable. We're just trying it. We are gonna be using it, I think, to better connect kids to resource uh, mental health resources, which I think will be a great benefit. But we're, we're also not to that point yet. That's in, in the planning stages for next fall.
Okay, that's great. I I just, it's a really important issue, right? And I'm, you know, we do a lot of assessing of our kids.
Yes, we do.
And if this isn't telling us anything, why are we doing it? I guess to really go down to the basis of it.
I will say, even though we're not there yet, we have had at all schools. Um, we have picked up kids through looking at this data that we didn't know there was really anything going on. Cuz it does ask questions about what we call internalizing factors that. I mean, it's easy if 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 Stacy's out there like slipping tables and and throwing things and and punching other people. That's easy to see, but it's not easy to see some of the other risk factors like isolation and loneliness and things like and depression. Not that it diagnoses anything, but um, when we get a flag on a kid that we didn't know was there. So we found kids that we didn't like, so I think every provider would in in our schools would say, yeah, I've, I've, I've learned about some kids I didn't, that weren't on my radar. So at the very least, I feel like we've caught some kids and hopefully, you know, get gotten them the help that they need. But I I know we can do a lot better in terms of kind of looking at the system as a whole.
And I'm just, so we're clear, I'm really happy we're catching, I want to do that. I do, I mean, that's really important. I just wanna make sure that we as a board are providing you with the right tool in order to do useful work to achieve that, right? And I, all I'm seeing right here is just kinda like the same glob of data every year. And it's, I I just wanna make sure you're learning from it so you can use that to help our kids. And we're getting useful that out of this. That just, that's my big picture.
I do think this is a better tool than the one we were using before. So there's that. And I think our social workers would back me up on that.
Tracy Burns.
I have two questions. The first one piggybacks on what uh trustee Phelps was talking about. So it was the best data. So um. Like, I know what risk means like in the dictionary, but like this is risk of what? So if a student shows elevated risk or extremely elevated risk, what is that trying to predict?
So just the way the questions are, risk of um. Not being healthy socially or emotionally, which could, which we tend to like. Risk of not doing well in school, risk of not connecting well with peers or family. Things of that nature that would affect um, kind of that connection to school. Um, and in in some cases, when they they fall into that extremely elevated category. We might, we might really wanna talk to the kid about like. How are things going, right? Like they, they tend to feel kinda like out there on their own and isolated and not really sure how they fit in. So. It's not a diagnostic tool. It's just, it's more of a. It's, it, it's a first step that we would take then to kinda put all these other pieces together to see if the kid's okay. But it might, it might be an indicator that they're not okay. It might be an indicator that they just didn't feel like taking the screener that day and just went like this and, right? But um, it gi- it gives us a s- a, a starting point in some cases.
Okay, yeah, just in looking at it, I didn't know if, uh, like if it's a risk of some particular, you know, behavior or outcome. It sounds like the risk really just means that it prompts someone to take a closer look.
Yeah, yeah. And it would indicate kind of like, is it more of an external, like? Just sort of that external conflict, like you can see, like they're not getting along with their peers. They're lashing out, they're getting into physical altercations, or is it more of a silent, like, I just don't know, like. I'm struggling and I don't know what to do about it in a, in a quiet way. So. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an improvised, imprecise tool at best, but I think it, it, it's, it's definitely a piece of the puzzle.
Sure. I'm happy to let someone else have a turn, if someone else has something.
Trustee Win.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I think it's really helpful to see um the trends within district, you know, across the years as you've shown them. I'm curious about these growth numbers when we're looking at like a percentage, how that trends as like a data point against, you know, nationwide or Michigan or like comparison districts. I don't know what the appropriate benchmark is, but it seems like it would give um maybe some good context for us if we knew kind of like what? Fifty-three point one percent, for example, is growth literacy rate compared to other schools.
They would say that it would be normal to have about fifty percent of your students make expected growth.
Okay.
So I don't think that's gonna be where we want to fall. Um, I will say that there's um, the data gets pretty intense, but there's like, for example, um, a conditional growth score. So I add this because when we talked about plateauing students. So the conditional growth score is now comparing that student, not just against that grade level norm, but along those students that are in that percentile of achievement and how much growth that is. So that's really helpful when we're looking at some of our like honors classes. Because they might have a very high score, but is their conditional growth still exceeding that of the peers that are also in the ninety-eighth percentile? Um, it is not uncommon in our district to have many students that are ninety-fifth percentile and higher for achievement. And so when we're looking at that growth, looking at it comparative to the grade level as a whole, they might be doing fine. But looking at it compared to that smaller subset is where we get into more of those prescriptive measures. So uh, what I share with you is kind of like that very big thirty thousand, but we're looking at grade levels. We're digging down into the data, who's having successes? I could tell, I'm not going to say it cuz I'm not gonna compare any grade levels. But we have a grade level that is doing exceedingly well with our black and African American students. That's something we need to dig into. What, what's happening? Like, how did you try something new? What was going on? Because you saw significantly more success and growth. So that's all going on behind the scenes. Um, just so you're aware, it's, it's constant and evolving.
Thank you.
Trustee Brunt.
Sure. Um, so wanted to commend the administration for taking on growth because that sets a much higher bar than just looking at proficiency. But along with that comes, I think, like, it requires a different mindset because you can have kids who are proficient or like, you know, in the highest proficiency category, but don't grow. And it's the opposite, you can have kids who are in the lowest proficiency category, but show tremendous growth conceivably. And so um, I guess my question is just more like, do you? How is that, how is that growing process sort of going with like kind of changing that mindset and and the conversations about looking at students?
Yeah, I think that that was the biggest thing, shifting the mindset of why we chose this tool, why the committee reviewed the tools um for our benchmark assessment. There is uh, a chart, I wish I could have it for you. It's a, the quantile chart, it's for four squares. And so if you can picture. Okay, it's four squares like these. So if you think about um, the more you go to the right, it's for achievement. So low achievement, high achievement, then on this side, it's growth, low growth, high growth. So you want that sweet spot of all the students being in that top right for that high achievement and high growth. So they can break it down for teachers in their class of data, but we can see it for um, at buildings, grade levels and things like that. I would say that at the spring of this term, we're really over in this area where we're seeing a lot of high growth and high achievement. So it is happening. And so while the data of expected growth might not be there, our students are making good growth. And the conversation that you talked about is when we have students that might be struggling, our previous assessment would say. Your, your child's identified as at risk, they're red. Your child's identified at risk, they're red. Can be pretty um difficult as a student to withtake that. It can be difficult to goal set. It can be really difficult to see yourself out of that, especially if there's a longer way to go. But what we found is, oh.
That's not our data, but it's an example of the chart.
Thank you. Yes. So the biggest thing that it's done is for some of our students who might be striving learners. They now can see themselves having an impact. Their growth is what we can talk about with them of. You know, we're not gonna say where you are for achievement because maybe you've got a long way to go. You're starting at the thirtieth percentile. But you know what? You made ten points of growth this testing term. And so it's helping all students to goal set and continue striving. And the same thing I would argue on the other end for our high achieving students that maybe school comes pretty easily to them. And they have been able to get all A's and not do much. Having a, now a goal setting of you're doing great, but we want to establish what's your individual goal. And having students really start having some of that internalizing of that growth piece. It's an ongoing thing, but I can say that this is my favorite report and they tried to legacy it a couple of years ago. And I had some strongly word, I know some, some strongly worded emails because I think visually it's helpful for teachers to see um. Just where we are, that yes, that achievement is not going anywhere. We still think that that is what's needed for students to be ach- like achieving and proficient. But we also know that that growth is what's gonna get them there. So we're still in process, but I would say three years in, it feels like we're definitely in a different place. And that's one of the um outcomes of the MTSS that I can't show you a, a report or something on. But it's really how do we continue working together with teams in our buildings and talking differently about that mindset shift? You can do a lot of things. Shifting mindsets is not something that happens instantly. It really happens together.
And also, I, I think in a district like this, it is easy to sit here, right? Like, you know, if, if the achievement is high, hey, cool, like, done my job. So it is, it is, it just gets a little more challenging and we have to find creative ways to help a very high achieving student. Me, make some growth um in, in, in meaningful ways for them.
And I just wanna thank you for your comments cuz coming from the board and talking about growth and talking about understanding that it takes time and that you see the work and you can hear the work that's happening really means a lot. And I think it's what establishes us as a learning organization focusing on growth for all. So thank you for your positive comments and your comments acknowledging that each time. I, I know it's really, it's heard and meaningful in the, in the district.
I have one question for you. Thank, first of all, thank you so much. That chart that you just showed. So if we use our, our squares up here as an example, the low growth would be the bottom two squares. So do more of our students who didn't make expected growth, are they in the, the right or the left? Or do we know? In other words, are they high achieving or are they low achieving students currently?
I'd have to dig into the data. I think it's really across the board.
I would love to see that, that scatter plot you have with the answer to that question. Cuz that, that does get into both the growth and also achievement, which is part of our, our mission.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we have a presentation on the district culture annual report development.
Yes, thank you. Um, Dr. Sli is here. And she's gonna present some initial thinking in regards to a annual update. So again, our kind of one pagers that we've been talking about with our um area directors. In regards to um how to show an overview on our district culture. So um, she's presenting her thinking today and it'll have a um. Some input from the board, uh, what might be included in that annually. So uh, Dr. Sill, turn it over to you.
Okay, well, you just heard a whole presentation about student success, um mostly focused on academics. So uh, had to think about, okay, are, how are all the other? What are all the other ways that we define or look at success? And I think uh throughout your strategic planning, the strategic planning that's been going on and will continue to go on. I, I noticed that some big buckets were developing and and one of the bigger ones was um this concept of school culture and learning environment. And um, without a positive, inclusive, healthy school culture and learning environment. Um, I can't imagine that our students will find the success that they deserve. They will not reach their potential. So um, that is something I am sure will be lifted throughout the strategic planning process. And also knowing that the success of any person, we have to look at the whole person. So we can look at the academics. Um, yes, absolutely. But what are some of the other things that we might look at? And 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 as I look through um the strategic planning um notes and whatnot. Two big categories kind of popped up for me. One was uh, mental health and I would. and I would kind of bundle that with social and emotional development as one category and the other category would be just a a sense of belonging. And um, I know this is focused on students, but I I would encourage the board to think about how are we looking at the health of the whole system, of the adults included? Uh, because if the adults aren't healthy and successful and feeling good about things, then it 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 trickles down. It's hard for them to um be their best for our students. So but just in terms of student success, um, things that I would utilize to kind of share how things are going would be um referrals to mental health supports. Um, we could look at, you know, how how students are utilizing our school based services with our counselors and our social workers. But also how are they um utilizing services with our our partners in Ingham ISD, our E three partnership, um, and and any other providers and and kind of um. And I don't, I'm not going to talk about the BASK anymore, but um utilizing that BASK to help streamline some of that referral process so that kids get what they need and the adults in our system aren't overloaded. Because right now, um, I would say every counselor and social worker has like maximum caseload and then some. Um, another data point or indicator of success um that we can look at sort of in the same regard regarding mental health would be the Michigan profile for healthy youth. Uh, it's a for grades seven, nine, and eleven, and it looks at uh health risk behaviors, things like substance abuse, violence, sexual behavior, nutrition, emotional health, et cetera. It also, it also gives us information about the protective factors that that students find at school. So it talks about adult connection at school within their community with their peers. So it gives us a lot of good information about um kind of the experience of students outside of um, you know, studying. Um, I already talked about the basket. We won't talk about that anymore. Um, I I think another indicator of success is looking at um, our wolf pack. I know it sounds a little bit goofy, but um eh each dog has a daily and weekly schedule. Uh, they spend time in the counseling centers, they spend time with kids who are in crisis. So I think looking at how we're utilizing that resource that we have, I think could give us some valuable insights into how students are feeling within our system. So those are the all the mental health things. And then um if we're looking at a sense of belonging, I think attendance rates, that's an easy one. Um, our kids coming to school. Uh, do they feel like they have a connection? Do they want to be here? Um, we similar to that, we could look at participation rates, um athletics, music, theater, clubs. And I know that we're collecting that information, but how do and maybe eventually we'll be taking that like, okay, this is happening with the these students and here's their academic data and how do those things overlap? Um, I think uh another data point for us to take a look at would be just kind of how are we acknowledging and s- and celebrating our students and their identities within our community? Um, uh showing that we have empathy for others, understanding, and we can look at that through some of our communication, like our points of pride that comes out. Um, we were starting, the community, I believe, is starting to get our monthly cultural overviews. It just gives kind of a snapshot of some of the significant events that are happening um related both to our curriculum and the people in our community. And um, looking at what kind of events are we having? We have protect the pack, which is uh going into its third, fourth, fourth year. Um, we have multicultural nights at each of the elementary schools, but what are some of the other events and things that are happening um within our schools that show that are elevating this sense of pride and and connection to our community? Um, another data point, if uh that is collecting some perception data from students, staff um and parents regarding school culture. And that could be done through the panoramas tool or other culture tools. Um, and then also taking a look at some of that discipline data, uh, how many kids are getting suspended, how many kids are getting expelled? We can look at the number of bullying incidents reported to the state, just to see how kids are connected to school. And it's not a perfect picture, but I think so uh these will give us a if we look at this with the academic data, I think we can get a good picture of kind of the health of the system. The act. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, trustees, questions? Trustees, first up.
Thank you for um this extensive list or I can clearly see that you put a lot of thought and work. Um, so thank you so much. So talking about supporting the child as a whole, um, as a whole, no. I was wondering about um family engagement and I know and I don't have like a specific data where, you know, to suggest or recommend or anything, but I was wondering when we're supporting the child or students as a whole, I think um and I also lessening the burden on the student and the faculty themselves. I think um family engagement might play a role. And then also, when it comes to belonging, um, I want to make, is there data that you can collect or provide? How much like, it's great that we have all these events, but are all the students able to access them?
Mm hmm.
Um, and my last data um question is um regarding the referrals, I would be interested to see once you do a referral or somebody does a referral, how much time does it take for a student to actually access those services?
I just wanted to jump in because I have a point related to trustee's trust us, um, which I I was a little confused. Um, some of these feel like indicators to me, like the first one, referrals to mental health, that's a number. Some of these feel like ways you would collect indicator data. And so I just.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that we could. Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
So I just, it was confusing to me to look at this because like some of this is like, we're going to do the survey, okay. But what's the data that we've reported every year from the survey that would inform, you know, our understanding of district culture?
Yeah, I mean.
So I just.
I, yeah, I don't know.
It was just, that was just, just to speed back to you, like, it's our first pass through it. Um, but that that part I think would be helpful to really be clear about which one it is.
Yeah, more specificity.
Yeah, I mean, you can you list things under the focus of the, for example, the uh Zitmyfi, whatever that second service is. MiFi, excuse me. Um, and again, those would be like at the level, I think, that I guess I would be interested in in terms of that. I don't know if those are the right ones, but I guess that's what I was expecting to to see all of them kind of as things that we would, you know, report, not the tool that we'd use to get it. Does that make sense?
Um, yes, it does. I mean, yeah, I mean, I I do think that is. It was kind of hard to kind of pull together with the strategic plan kind of in flux and not finished yet. Um, that that makes it more difficult to kind of figure out, like, what do we want to showcase or 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 look at or pull from to support what's happening in the strategic plan? So I think as as we develop the strategic plan, I think getting more specific about what are the things that we, what questions are we going to be asking about our culture? And what's the information that we're going to be seeking and how are we going to get it? I think that will be easier once we get a little bit further down the road.
Yeah, and I just would love, you know, with your expertise and being immersed in this in a way that none of us are at the you can bring that forward to into the conversation and be useful. But I agree, like, there's this, there'll be a meeting of those.
Yeah, for sure.
Trustee, win.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I just wanted to piggyback off that a little bit because I know that you're retiring and I'm concerned about us losing all of your great knowledge. So um, kind of like uh trustee Buffett was saying, like, I think it would be really great to have some kind of record and suggestions from you as well about what you think is really important to capture. Um, I think you've been really reflective and thinking about, you know, the strategic plan and aligning those. But um, before you leave, I think it would be really important for us to really capture any insights you might have that we haven't thought of or that we're not asking about, because I just think you're, you know, a wealth of knowledge in this area and want to like utilize you as much as we can.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so I was earlier going to say something that, yeah, I would hope that the strategic plan would help to provide a little bit more guidance for what to do. Uh, and like this, this looks like a a great inventory to start. My one thought is, uh, and this might be different from how I normally respond, but like this is also a lot. Um, in the sense that like you just could, you could have like thirty hours a week just doing nothing, but like working with all of this data, especially if you start trying to like put things together and like across some of these different sources. Um, and I don't know what the solution is, but I think that it's I I guess what I just wanted to surface is it's very easy to say like, oh, just like we can basically just start drowning in data.
Yes.
And like just thinking of like ways to avoid that. And I don't know if that's, I guess I imagine the administrative regulations for the, sorry. What is it called? The the for the strategic plan, like we did the goals and the operational, thank you. Um, the like that that will help, but um, yeah, and if there's a way that we can be thought partners, happy to do that.
Absolutely. I wrote it down. This is a lot. Yes, it's what it is. It is. It is a ton. It's a ton for sure.
Other questions? So uh superintendent Hood, could you tell us what the next steps with this would be?
Yeah, so um, we will, uh, Dr. Sli and I will debrief on this and kind of bring some of what rises to the top um back to you. We also will have in your yellow sheets for um the broader conversation, a calendar of the annual reporting. Um, for the next school year um by month. Um, so all the directors gave kind of a ballpark range of a time of the school year. They thought it makes sense. So you'll see in your yellow sheets, all of those departments listed by month, so you'll be able to see when you're going to get your um the the one or two pager. Again, we're not expecting all those to be presentations. I know the board made that clear. Um, so and our comms department is working on a common um kind of template or branding for those. So then, once we do those, we can put those on our website. Um, and as we do those on an annual basis, we can include data from the year prior. So similar to um uh assistant superintendent Bailey's presentation showing you some data from year to year, you'll see that same data from year to year with our annual reporting.
Great. Thank you. Um, next up, we have uh citizens' address. It's time when citizens can address agenda or non-agenda items. Uh, there are some parameters there, then it is a three minutes, it's printed on the agenda. Um, people must fill out a blue card. Do we have any blue cards, Secretary Doxy? Oh, yes, right here. Excuse me. Okay, um, first up, we have Kelly Rogers.
Last year's that my student, uh, my three kids have graced the halls of Okemos that I'm coming before you. So good job, board and district. You have students who are juniors and seniors whose prom experience will be negatively impacted by not allowing them to take fellow students from Okemos High School that they care about and with whom they want to share this last experience of high school, simply because they are also not juniors and seniors. My child is a senior and is in this position. There has been a prom proposal, a dress purchased, scheduled dinner and pictures, everything but the prom itself in this case. And this does not seem fair. The rationale that was provided to me is as follows. Prom would get unruly. People will be dating each other just to go to prom and prom will lose its luster. I think we are underestimating our students at Okemos High School with this policy, especially their ability to choose who they want to spend the special moments in their young lives with. I was told my kid could go with just friends. They have done this for all of the school dances so far. This could have been their special moment with someone they care about in a relationship that is supported by both families. And I know we're not the only parents and families that are facing this. So to quote Footloose, because it feels sort of appropriate here and it's a once in a lifetime opportunity to do so. We're talking about the right to dance, the right to life on your own terms. Taking away the choices of our students is not the same as teaching them to make good ones about their life and love. And in this case, I feel we took away their choice and I don't understand the reasons for it. I'm asking that you give the choice back to them, if not this year, then in the future, of further reconsideration of this policy. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Hi Nate, is there anyone online? Okay, thank you. Hey, um, next up, we have um superintendent reports and requests.
Superintendent Hood, thank you, President Buffett and uh our trustees and community members. Again, I'm not looking at my phone. I'm bringing up stuff from my reports, uh, which is looking at my phone, but I'm not. Do not imagine. Well, I'm getting in trouble. I've had my phone out at school here. So um first of all, I wanted to commend our our student uh reps again for the outstanding work they've done. Um, they covered a part of my report already, which is just goes to say the impact of our student reps. Um, the mental health awareness week uh that is going on is May twelfth uh today through the sixteenth and it is culminating with that sock out suicide event. That event began eight years ago uh with Mrs. Freeman Baldwin. Um, starting to promote the event to really um, look at that stigma and the shadow that the mental health stigma casts on those that are were hesitant eight years ago to even get involved. And to see how that has changed in terms of just uh the de-stigmatizing stigmatizing in Okemos with our sports teams, with our students in the hallways and with this sock out suicide event. Um, is the way it should be. So as someone myself who suffers from social anxiety, um, you know, I have my own journey. Um, I'll be wearing bright socks and I know the board was invited to wear socks that day as well to their workplaces. Um, so please, board, uh, I encourage you to participate. Um, those action student leaders pour their hearts into the campaign and they're seeking ways to open doors for students so we can have conversations to to um treat mental health and mental illness like it's a a like we would a fi- a physical um illness or disease. So be remiss with not pausing. You've you've heard now two straight board meetings about action and sock out suicide and both are tied back to Ms. Freeman Baldwin. Uh, when we have five hundred kids at Okemos High School, uh, uh, high school of sixteen hundred kids involved in action, there's a reason for that. When we have sock out suicide getting momentum and corporate sponsors and and other schools now starting to adopt it as well and and other organizations like Ellie's Place and Eli's Project and um, and more, there's a reason for that. It's the vision and dedication that um Mrs. Freeman Baldwin provides to those students and is really about that together and about that educating with excellence, that whole child we talk about and inspiring students for life and the journey that they're going to take in their lives. Um, that's not always going to be easy. Um, and giving them the skills to navigate that healthy with their healthy concept and making healthy choices, but also help to have awareness to help others. So would be remiss without saying thank you um to her personally and professionally uh for the work that is done and for the outstanding work that our students are doing to support each other and um and the adults as well. Um, I do want to take a moment to um forecast again at our, you know, our budget update will be coming later um this evening with um executive director Lance, but we will be providing an update to our community um before our next board packet goes out. And again, telling in the background of why we are here um with a, starting the year with a deficit budget and um seeing that one point two million dollar decrease in our general fund revenue um because of the offset in employment, employee retirement costs as well as our decrease in special ed funding and insurance increases. So we want to make sure people understand kind of that why. Um, but what's new that we'll be sharing is the um improvement in our projections, but still the need to provide budget reductions for the board's consideration to make sure the district is healthy financially moving forward. So as you know, and our, I want our community to know is over the last several months, members of our administrative team have been diligent and working with me to identify strategies to offset um and help balance our budget. And that looked at reductions across all departments. So looking at all of our accounts, all of our spending, our subscriptions, all of our things. Our subscriptions, all of our things. But it also meant looking at. Our positions and our people. So possible staffing adjustments as well as opportunities for for increased revenue. So at our next meeting, you'll see my recommendation uh in regards to some considerations uh of those items to help help with our budget. This week, our building and apartment leaders are having difficult conversation with staff. That might be in roles or positions that could potentially be on that draft recommendation list. Again, we're sharing with um those staff members that none of none of that is final, but we don't want them to hear it here first. We want them to. Have that conversation with their director or principal, um so we can take care of our people. Uh to promote transparency with the community, we'll be um sharing with them when when my recommendation will go out. And that's this Thursday after five P M. Um you'll get your board packets. And that recommendation uh will be in there. Again, it's only a recommendation, but to be transparent with the community, a lot of people are worried about this and. Um people are on edge and um there's a lot, there's a heavy weight and stress that is real. I do want people to know that the options that we've considered were weighed with great, great care. And there's really few if only painless choices when it comes to staffing, because every staff member. Puts their heart and soul into positions they have in the district. And we've added positions or had positions for a reason. And um like many districts. We want more support, not less of it. Uh but we also have to um. Again, balance our budget. Our commitment still, though, is to make sure we define Oakhamus as an exceptional district in that process, and that is difficult when, you know, position is listed. There's, of course, the feeling of being devalued, and we want to make sure that um we remain focused on caring for our people. So um again, reiterating, there's still a lot of unknowns with our budget, and Director Lance will show you a little more fine tuning tonight. And then a little more each meeting up through the end of June. And for our community to be aware that we have those budget updates. Again, on the nineteenth, on the twenty seventh and June ninth, and then by the end of June, we'll we're required to approve that preliminary budget. When again, the state's not required to come up with their educational budget till the end of September. And um. The the balancing act is tough. It's um trying to care for your people. Trying to preserve that high quality educational experience that our families expect. And then also taking care of the long term health of the district uh financially. And making sure when we do all that, we can still deliver all the extraordinary outcomes that we've been delivering. Um and still make improvements along the way with our own growth. So um I just wanted to um. Put that out there. And again, uh I'll write a letter to the community that will go out this week to kind of remind them of where we are. Uh it'll go out to the staff as well. Um but that commitment that we all have to our students remains steadfast. And making sure we have safe, supportive, enriching environments where every learner can can succeed. And that's our mission and vision that we talked about at Strategic Planning. So. We will get through these challenges together. Um and again, uh at an next board meeting on Monday night, you'll see that preliminary list uh to be explained. And then we'll give you um. There'll be opportunities for discussion uh the following week. Uh certainly next week and the following week, so we can kind of fine tune in on um those reductions that we want to make. I I need to say that I think the team has done outstanding work on this, but it's hard work. And it's work that didn't come with um. A lot of um stress and tears in regards to the relationships that might be impacted. We're in the relationship business. And that's what schools are. You're not going to learn if you don't have relationships. And we're not going to have the culture that we want to promote without good relationships across. Our administrative team, our teachers, our support staff. And all those that help the district run. And again, each one of those rocks was overturned to look at uh on this journey. So. To be continued, but again, just wanted to forecast for the board and community. As we kind of proceed on this journey through through the end of June and beyond. Um later in our discussion or in our action items, you'll see uh our school of choice memo. Uh the school of choice memo, the only revision later when you vote on it was to combine the beginner garden and kindergarten numbers. Six being our minimum total, since they're all the same age students, uh we should combine them. And again, I can take more. And um. If they have interest in beginner garden, I can fill beginner garden openings. And if they have interest in kindergarten, I can fill kindergarten opening. So that's the only change you'll see. Again, we don't want to add staffing uh as a result of our school of choice. But for every open seat we can fill without adding staffing, that helps with our budget situation because we get that foundational allowance of that student coming with them. Uh which can help offset some of our costs. So um. Again, we'll leave room for move-ins of Oakhamus students, but wanted you to know the one change uh tonight before you. Uh vote on approving this. And then um. Finally, since we didn't have a meeting last week and it was Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. Just wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to our teachers. Who do amazing work uh meeting the needs of. Their diverse kids in their classes, making that connection. And uh meeting the kids where they are and helping them learn and grow and taking the risk necessary to learn. Our support staff uh who do amazing jobs supporting teachers and supporting our students on that journey. And then there are so many behind the scenes that help our 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 district run and stays student centered. And I couldn't name every department, but they know who they are. Uh and you know who they are. Um all those departments are heard, they're seen, they're valued. And they're all an important piece of the puzzle that is the Oakhamus Schools and is an important part of that together. So. Uh we did have a board meeting the week of teacher and staff appreciation, so I just wanted to say thank you, heartfelt thank you on behalf of. Uh the administration um to all our employees um for making Oakhamus the exceptional district that. In which it is to to learn uh and to work. And to to spend our careers and our time away from our own families uh and the privilege of spending it with with kids from others. So. Um thank you, staff, for that. And with that, I'll take any questions. I think hopefully people pick that up. Okay.
Right. Questions from trustees? Trustee Phelps.
Just real quick, thank you for bringing up um the budget information.
Yeah.
And it's good to hear that you're going to send out a communication to the community. Just so you're kind of in the loop of what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
It's funny how many people think a budget has already passed and decisions have already been made.
Oh, gosh.
When. I keep thinking I've never seen a budget. I've never voted on one, and that's one of the boards for.
Yeah.
Um roles, right? So I think there's a uh. And I don't know where it's being pushed from, that there are decisions being made. And I I mean, for example, someone told my daughter today, why are you forcing all the oldest teachers to retire? That was some, and so I mean, like, this is the narrative out there. So I think a communication piece is really important in saying. What is actually happening? What's not happening? And then what are the next steps? Because there's just the rumor mill right now is flying and. Uh especially at high school. So I would uh encourage you when that goes out to really kind of be deliberate with those remarks so people understand really where we're at and what's the plan moving forward. So.
Thank you, Trustee Phelps was not aware of that particular rumor. Um just for our community members that are tuning in, um there is not a forced retirement of anyone from the district. Um but the district has offered a voluntary severance package to those with fifteen years or more of service that could be eligible. Um and might uh want to retire, uh but that's their choice to do so. Um and we'll see if we get enough teachers to do that to make it uh a win for those that might choose to do it and. And also add some savings to the budget for the district, but. Um by no means are we forcing anyone to retire or leave the Oakhamus Schools. Um I think you'll see the thoughtfulness um. At which we're trying to take care of our people and maintain as much programming as possible when you see the list next week. And I can tell you if there's a budget, um Executive Director Lance and I don't know what it is yet. Because we um don't have the crystal ball to see what the state's going to do, to see what our enrollments will be. And to know how the board's going to weigh in, because that is the board's responsibility to set the budget. So. Um that process is very transparent here at every meeting, so I encourage uh our community members to tune in. You'll see uh those revisions as we focus and fine tune in our on our most likely budget. And you'll see the assumptions kind of go back and forth um as we get closer to the end of June. Uh but that's been a process that served us well, has been very transparent. And will continue continue to be so. Um and I thank you for that, so we can include some of those points in our communication.
Um yeah, and thank you for your great work in preparing us for this difficult season of 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 budget approval. I would just just encourage you to focus on just what you said, the process piece, because I think that's what helps to quiet rumors and and misunderstanding. It all happened here in the public.
It will, right?
Yes, so.
Yeah, and those dates again, uh nineteenth, the. Uh twenty seventh, June ninth, and we have to adapt the budget by June thirtieth.
Other questions? Okay, uh moving on to uh board reports and requests, we'll start by acknowledging receipt of correspondence. Uh the board received a communication from Wen Jing Zhang regarding the AP World History Curriculum. From Autumn Gabara and Action Club members regarding sock out suicide. From Annette Friesman regarding O H S correspondence and Lisa Kreitz regarding negotiations. And with that, I'll open up for other board reports, requests. Trustee, when?
Um, so. In the board book, you have a copy of our draft retreat agenda. Um and so I just wanted to. You know, kind of introduce that a little bit. Um. The committee is Tom, Leeny and myself for that. Um we did send out a survey, as you know, to try to get some general feedback from you guys about. What is most important from you or for you to happen during that day at the retreat? Um the agenda we came up with, we, you know, basically looked at all the feedback you sent and kind of tallied that up. And tried to make sure we could get in, you know, what everyone seemed to think is most important. So um. If you check out those agendas, we would love your feedback, because again, this is just a draft and something that we want to, you know. Collaborate on and make sure that we get everyone's um take on to have a good retreat date.
Trustee Phelps.
How do you want that feedback? Is that a discussion we're having now, or is that something we?
I think we can spend a couple of minutes talking about it, yeah.
The one, and I thank you for all the work. Certainly a lot of work has gone into it. Um I appreciate that. Uh the one thing that that comes to mind immediately is is us reacting to a strategic plan. Uh what's the word? The administration portion.
Operation.
Operational plan of the strategic plan. I I feel like that's going to be a key on this to John to bounce some ideas off us and, you know, Superintendent, I'm sorry. To bounce some ideas off us to kind of really sharpen that pencil, if you will. So we're all moving lockstep, you know, kind of into the new year. So that may be something, and I know that's kind of part of the identify board priorities portion, but I I really think. We're spending all this time and effort on a strategic plan. I really want to be deliberate going forward that we're, you know, going in 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 line with that. So that would be kind of my initial reaction, but thank you for all the work on it. I do appreciate it.
Just on that point, we'll have an update on strategic planning, but one of the updates is that the um. Implementation Planning Day with M A S B has actually been moved to after our retreat. So it'd actually be an opportunity to. I think for the Superintendent Hood to go to that implementation day that's facilitated with M A S B with some kind of conversation from us about clarity regarding some of the priorities there in this strategic plan.
I think that sounds fantastic. So I think, you know, making sure we save time for that. So Superintendent Hood goes into that. Prepared and he understands board, you know, thoughts and that, you know, on this was is going to be huge. So thank you.
Other feedback on the agenda? Trustee Brent.
Yeah, just um a minor point for discussion people think about or just even dismiss, but in the the list of, you know, board priorities. Uh you know, possible topics, equity inclusion, sleep boarding of cell phones, bullying, et cetera. Something that I would throw out there to maybe consider would be. A I. Uh and the reason why I say that is because in short order, it's going to be impacting, we're going to see more impacts. So for instance, even from. Uh we talked about like preparing students for life after graduation, like. That's going to be changing rapidly. I was in a conversation with someone this weekend about like. Just the kinds of surprising industries that are likely to start seeing uh shrinking need for humans, uh I guess you would say. Uh also impacting the way that our staff does their job, the way that we expect students to do their kind of work and. Uh I don't want to sound like, oh, like the sky is falling kind of thing, but I think to the extent that we can. Think about these things ahead of time and maybe provide opportunity or provide venues to get solicit and receive feedback from. Stat from our staff conceivably from our students to like think about this. Um we will be less blindsided later on. Or we're less likely to be blindsided later on.
Thank you. Um, Trustee, when?
Um, I totally agree with that. Um. I was just going to say that what we kind of were envisioning for that was an activity where during the retreat we will take. So those were just examples. The idea is that we'll have an activity where we are actually generating what those priority topics are at at the retreat. So, you know, A I and whatever else anyone else might think of, we would. Come up with those ideas together, and then we would do like a sorting activity to kind of figure out which ones bubble to the top.
So.
Yeah, um. My, I wonder in in terms of a board priorities and um. Email President Buffett right before the meeting, so he probably hasn't even seen the email yet. I know he hasn't actually, because I know he was in a meeting right before this was. Wanting help understanding the difference between. The board setting the strategic plan goals and the board setting priorities. Are those two different things? Are they the same? My worry is I have a strategic plan and a list of board priorities. Now I have two strategic plans. So I want to try to dovetail those together as much as we can, so we have alignment in terms of um. In terms of the work. So there's not, you know, the strategic plans, goals, and the board wants me to work on all these other goals in addition.
And actually, that distinction is on on the, it's the like little subtext, it's kind of hard to read because the watermark is there. But uh distinguish between priorities for board development and district priorities and for the the latter. It could, you know, it is the board's work. So these would be like in the in policy or in learning more. Our language here might be a little opaque, but we have possible priority levels. Action, things that we, you know, maybe going to burning and get to and soon arrive and later, what things we want to kind of really learn.
Yeah.
About, you know, in a more deliberate way.
Great.
Maybe that's a study session or something. Um and then other, but your points will take.
Yeah.
We can't have. Two different things.
Uh thank you for that. And um that was my other question was I was wondering if it was that. So thank you for that. And I do want to praise the board for also modeling. Um what we're doing with our um directors on the kind of the annual report. Um part of the agenda was also uh kind of the board setting some of their own. Parameters on what are our points of pride, what are our markers that we're growing as a board. Um and coming up with uh. Kind of the board's own version of that, which I thought was just wonderful to model. Um what you're expecting of the administrative team. So I just want to say bravo to the planning team for including those thoughts as well.
I think we will um do a little tweaking and then provide this out again uh for some more feedback, because we really, you know, once we leave in June, we won't see each other until retreat day. Um so we'll want to make sure that we have have some uh clarity on how to move forward with this. So. Um thank you for your feedback. Um other board reports, requests? Uh, Trustee Kavanaugh.
Um I just wanted to give a little update on our. Goals revision that we had from our strategic planning um that that um. Leeny, Tom and I met. Um you all had more opportunity for feedback. We've kind of. Incorporated that feedback. We did another one sober earlier today, and that'll be going back to everybody. On the board. Tom, give me, help me. That's eventually it's going to go out to our whole committee that we worked with for the community.
So. Just seen discussed. Second.
Right.
So we have.
Two times.
Three times.
Right.
I thought now.
Yes, please.
Thought now is actually wanting to.
Wanting to invite participants um from April twenty sixth to give some feedback on them. Um and I want to credit Superintendent Hood for kind of flagging, you know, it's all well and good. And ultimately, ultimately, the. Uh Board of Education will adopt the goals that will guide the strategic planning process and. Uh one of our core values. And one of our core values is being is collaboration. And so really wanting to make sure that people who were there on that Saturday can understand both the process that we have gone through, which is a couple of iterations with John and Assistant Superintendent Bailey and trustees. Providing input on the on the goals to make them more workable. And invite all the participants into kind of having another chance to to wait to put their thumbprint on them. And so we thought we'd invite people in two ways. One will be through a survey that's similar again to trustees had had already done a little bit different. And then the other is to invite people to a Zoom session where that would be the the kind of hopefully the the last time that there'd be some participated process before we finalize them as a board. And so this is under a pretty, pretty quick timeline as we want to get this work done before the end of the year. It's slower than we were on. And I think in the number of trustees kind of weighed on this is again, the importance of getting them right, because this is a three to five year plan. I really wanted to guide the work going forward. So the ad hoc goal committee met just before our meeting today and reached some consensus amongst us as to the next iteration. And we thought that we would send that out to both trustees and participants on April twenty sixth. We will have a closed date of that that would be soon enough. So that then when we meet on Zoom, everyone could see all of the input that's come in at that point. So we'd kind of all have access to the same same feedback from a broader sense. May, yeah, well, April twenty six is, sorry. April twenty six is our original day. So those participants. But a question that we had was, okay, so so the the ad hoc committee had an idea of actually having that Zoom meeting this Saturday, May seventeenth. For again, the April twenty sixth participants. And trust, it was included all trustees, of course, to come in and everything in one hour to look at all of the data and revise. I'm talking to superintendent hood this morning, that might be a little steep, you know. And so we looked at maybe pushing that out to next a week from Wednesday night, I think it's the twenty first. The night of the twenty first, let's say like seven to eight. So wanted to open that up and not make any decisions for for the group, but wanting to pick a date in the near future to get that input and and feedback. So.
Note on that, though, that it's not a board meeting, so it would be not the whole board. It would be the ad hoc committee and the other members of that April twenty sixth committee.
So other trustees would have the opportunity to complete the survey.
Yes.
Right, like other April twenty sixth members. And then of course, sorry, sorry, you're gonna say.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, of course, at the end, after we present the post Zoom meeting. Of course, yeah. Thank you. So thoughts on timeline? Or process?
Sounds great to me.
I want to thank trustees for providing input. It was very interesting when we got the feedback on this last round. There was some, well, I'll just say that the learning environment and culture, like everyone liked it. For at least from us, it was a lot of coherence there and then others took a little more massaging. So I thank everyone who provided input.
Any preference on the seventeenth or the twenty first from? Can decide? Or?
Yes. Let's 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 do that offline. Okay, thank you. Other board reports requests. Trustee Chester.
I just wanted to share that last week, Okamas Archery Team, they did go to Louisville to participate in the Eastern Eastern finals and thirty three states participated over almost fifty thousand childrens were there, moms or students, including our students from elementary, middle school and high school. And it was a really good experience for us as families or parents and the students too.
Trustee win.
Um, yeah, just from the policy committee, I believe our next meeting is this Thursday at noon. So for anyone that has any feedback on anything that you think is important for us to bring up and discuss, please reach out to one of us that's on the policy committee so that we can look at whatever those issues may be. And I know specifically you wanted us to look at the one that's under review about political involved student group things. So so certainly we will look at that one, but if there's something besides that, please reach out to one of us to let us know. And then besides that, I just wanted to say thank you for speaking today. And normally we don't like necessarily respond to public comment. And we will, you know, discuss later, but I just wanted to thank you for your comment today and say that I did quickly look up in our board policy and the thing with prom is not a board policy. The only thing I found about prom and board policy is fifty two oh four about student appearance and dress code. So it's not related to board policy specifically, but still important for the board to know. This was definitely something that is not an issue that I was aware of because I don't have a high school student. So I appreciate you bringing that to the board so that, you know, we can know about the concern and, you know, discuss that more. Thank you.
Trustee.
Could you repeat the date when you meet?
On Thursday.
It's also in yellow sheets, just for future reference. Trustee cabinet.
I was just going to say that I attended the M A S B behind the scenes at the Capitol event on one last Wednesday. And that was the biggest turnout I think they've ever had, at least in several years. So I think they had about ninety people from across the state, which I think tells you a lot of how concerned people are right now on everything that's going on budgetary and nationally. This is the first time that at least as I've been attending that somebody from the National Association of School Boards came and did a presentation on federal funding. So clearly, that's something that we all are concerned about and need to be concerned about. But it was a great event and it was coming off of election night, the night before, for several school districts that did bonds and millages. And it was a bruising day for a lot of the people at at this group. And I just was thankful again of our Okamas community who always, you know, has been so supportive of our bonds and millages and just came away very thankful for our community.
Thank you. Trustee Brent.
I was just going to piggyback on something that Trustee Kavanaugh had mentioned about like federal funding, because I know like, and we've talked about that before. And one of the things that's come up is like, well, we we don't have a lot of the funding that's immediately at risk because not as much of our funding comes from federal sources. But I noticed in the Senate budget that was a bridge proposal that was released last week, there's three hundred billion dollars of state money that is proposed to go make up to make up the gap in federal funding. And so just underscoring that these things do, you know, have, you know, second and third order impacts on us because that's three hundred billion dollars. It could go for a lot of other things.
Okay, trustee win.
Oh, one last thing I just wanted to add. I just wanted to emphasize again about staff appreciation week. And, you know, how much we really do value all of our staff. And I also wanted to just add the appreciation I have for all the parents and the parent volunteers who do so much to help with staff appreciation week and all the things that they do. And it's been really amazing to see posts on social media from those different parent groups and different parents that, you know, they've gone in and set up lots of different things in the schools to help support the staff. And sometimes not all of us parents can be there to help, you know, show our support in that way. So I just wanted to also thank all the parents for volunteering their time to help show appreciation to our staff.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving into action items. And first up, we have a consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve items one through three for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Item two, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Item three, acknowledge receipt of the April financial statement and approved payment of bills for April.
Support.
Moved by trustee Doxy, supported by trustee Phelps. All in favor, say aye. Excuse me. Okay, no, it's okay.
Noted on the minutes from the last meeting that there's just a typo instead of touch a glass, touch a class that says tough a glass. So.
Ever the English major and thank you.
Seems like a me kind of thing that I would have done it, but.
We'll get that.
Yeah. Great. I don't think we need to redo, reread the motion. I think that's close and with that modification. So we'll do the vote again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And the ayes have it seven oh. Other action items, we had Mr. Vala present about the orchestra student trip. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board endorse the Okamas High School Orchestra trip to Germany and Austria proposed from March twenty sixth through thirty first, twenty twenty six, with the understanding that students will abide by all school policies and procedures while abroad.
Support.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Hey, next up, we have a action related to school of choice openings. Could I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board approve the recommended openings to be advertised through the Ingham Intermediate School District for school of choice enrollment in Okamas Public Schools.
Support.
Moved by trustee wins, supported by trustee Doxy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Excuse me. Okay, next up, we have some discussion items. First up, we have one related to the Ingham Intermediate School District by annual election. And one order of businesses, we need to identify two of our trustees to attend the meeting on June second. Anyone like to volunteer to do that? Sister elect members for the ISD School District Board of Education.
I can do it if no one else wants to. I want to give others opportunities, obviously, if anyone else wants to.
I think that was a fair pause, trustee Phelps. Now we need an alternate. And we do need one alternate as a backup. I will say that trustee Kavanaugh and I attended the superintendent hood, the Meridian Township meeting, and it is great just to be in a different venue with other elected officials. This is falls in that.
I mean, I understand the need for an alternate. I'm fairly certain I can go. So I mean, shy of emergency circumstances.
Well, with that assurance, I will be the alternate. With all you as my witnesses. Okay, and do we also need to discuss who we'd like them to nominate? There were some resumes in the board packet.
Yes.
So would anyone like to identify someone that they would like Andy to to promote and vote for?
If there were only three candidates for three positions, though.
I think there's fours.
There's four.
I think there's four.
Michael Flowers, Aaron Shore, there's two different term lengths too. Term lengths. Caitlin Salo and Joel Geary.
I was drawing.
No, go.
I was to Aaron Shore, but mostly because of his background. He's got experience at the community college level and it's been a, you know, in the community for a long amount of time.
I was going to say Joel Geary. This is just my, you know, my two cents. Two of the candidates are from the Lansing School District. The Lansing School District does have a lot of sway currently in the Ingham ISD. And having a voice from outside of the Lansing School District down the ISD, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing.
It's compelling.
Joel Geary also stuck stuck out to me partly because of the their experience, especially in like school board affairs and things like that. I think that would be good for the position.
Thoughts from other trustees? We were selecting two people, right? Or is it two, two?
One for the partial. So are those the two recommendations for the?
Yes. But I am compelled by trustee Phelps' kind of logic there in terms of, and I, you know, the the current membership of that body is something I honestly did not know about. So.
Well, and 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 taking a deeper dive into that, just some of the, you know, decision making coming out of the ISD and who that benefits and who that doesn't. You know, part of the reason we're having our budget discussion, you know, next week is because of some decisions making made by the ISD related to funding that's negatively affecting students. So, you know, one way that we can, you know, long term help that is by supporting candidates who may, you know, I mean, be more apt to, you know, our thoughts on that. So again, just my two cents.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I mean, by that logic, right, there the woman from was it Dansville? But yeah, it would be also another person to promote.
Sure.
So trustee Doxy.
Just to move the conversation along, I am supportive of Aaron Shore and Joe Geary for the two candidates for the six year term.
Any other thoughts on it? Trustee ready?
I like those ones also.
Okay, so we're consensus, anyone? Not support that? Okay, I don't think we did motion. Just, okay, so that's the two six year. And then what about the last? The third position? I'm going to go with the.
I was going to say I would support Caitlin Shaw for the same reason, just to make sure we're giving everybody in the ISD voice.
Thank you. I would agree with that.
Okay, there you have it. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the twenty five, twenty six budget development.
Yeah, Executive Director Lance is here to provide her now weekly update on our budget development and our assumptions that have changed in our our timelines for these discussions. So Elizabeth's been working very hard on this, so turned over to you, Executive Director Lance.
Yes, thank you. Since we met last time, it was surprise, the Senate proposal came out last, I think it was two weeks ago now, April two weeks ago. And I wanted to give a comparison of the governor's proposals and with the Senate proposal and talk through that a little bit. In terms of the Senate proposal, there was a four hundred dollar foundation increase in their proposal. However, I'm going to, there is a caveat to that in that it said, there was a new section added that said fifty percent of any increase in foundation now and going forward would have to be used for educator compensation, compensation. Sorry, I'm really cold, so I'm like hard here. Yeah. Anyways, so that four hundred dollars went in the past few years or have been various proposals that have come out that reference educator compensation. And in those, this state has, they've there's been some question, what is the definition of as an educator? And they have defined that in one of the sections. So that's kind of what M D E, M D E used. And in those situations, oh, sorry, I'm, I've got this all on the next, the next slide. We'll go to the next one, then I'll bounce back. In prior iterations, I have said it's and somebody who works thirty two hours a week directly employed with students. So we have some of our Directly employed with students. Uh so we have some of our. Teaching staff who don't work directly with students are M T S S coordinators, are gifted and talented coaches, like our coaches, things of that nature. So these are things that have that are that are concerning to me because that is how it has been defined in the past. In addition, um compensation, according to M D E and the sense they took was that. The law says compensation, it doesn't say taxes. So the FICA on retirement. Were not part of that fifty percent. You had to fund the FICA on retirement through a different source. Um so by way of example, if we had to use half of that four hundred dollars uh per pupil towards educator compensation. So we would have two hundred per pupil if if the four hundred dollars went through. About nine hundred and twenty-five would be used for educator compensation. The retirement and FICA on that is about three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars as an estimate. Which equates to about seventy-five dollars per pupil. So that would leave a hundred and twenty-five dollars remaining for all the other uses for us. So if we bounce back, um I just want to caution that yes, there was a four hundred dollar per pupil, but it was restricted. Use um with the new section. So you will, we'll see as we move forward in my presentation. I didn't necessarily take into account that four hundred dollars and I'll um uh explain why once we get to that page. Transportation, um the last two years, we've had transportation revenue. Uh both proposals maintained current funding. Uh the school safety, mental health uh legislation, um the governor maintained that funding. The Senate uh maintained ongoing funding at fifty percent and said for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um will also include some one-time funding to put forward uh for schools to do like a visitor management program. Or behavior software, A D's, things like that. So they were dictating um more so than they had with. Um the, I mean, the school safety, mental health funding, and there's already certain things that you can and can't use it for this further restricted. Um what we could use some of that funding for. And then the employee healthcare retirement offset, this is where we are districts, the cost for the employee healthcare is switching from. Employees, three percent to the district now pays a three percent. The sen- the governor um said, we'll help you out one time for one year and we'll reimburse you about fifty percent of what that's gonna cost you. The Senate said pretty much the same thing, but they had reimbursed in equates to about eighty-five percent um of what the funding would be. And then child nutrition, while this doesn't affect our general fund, I just wanted to put out there that this is um maintains the the free. Uh breakfast and lunches for all. Um just there, there is a current House bill out there, but it is the the one that just is a stop get measure. We have heard that there's some rumors that we might see one this week. We'll see if that happens. The revenue consensus is this Friday. So if we move on um to the the budget, we haven't, but really the only thing we've changed. And since uh the last meeting two weeks ago was really the um. To account for some item in the Senate proposal. So the one point seven million, our carry forward effect on the general fund budget hasn't changed since our last conversation. Our uses of our fund balance, the new items that are that are um impacting us is still at three point uh four seven two million. So what we did update is in the revenue, the those items that uh that. Provide a source to our general fund. Um what I did not take into account was foundation allowance. Um we left it at one ninety-six. If we wanted to use and go up to four hundred, then I feel like we need to then build in some. Estimates for um. Uh you know, that we have to restrict it and then put some um salary and benefit what that impact would be. So if we do want to do that, that's we can make that adjustment, but then we would build in an offsetting expenses um that would equate to. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars per pupil. So as of right now, um leaving that until we hear more from, you know, I haven't heard a lot. In terms of usually we get from the school board association or the school business officials. We'll get some rundown on how they feel this is gonna, this is gonna play out. And I haven't heard that yet. Um anticipating Friday, um there is, if there's a meeting after the revenue consensus, where a little talk more about some of these proposals. So I hope to hear that. But until then, I'm leaving that at the one ninety-six. Um till we know more. So since the Senate, this is where we, once we start getting more than one proposal, we say, okay, what's alike? What's, you know, where do we think? Can we adjust our minimums? Can we adjust our most likely? And since the Senate agreed to that one-time stipend, uh one-time reimbursement for some of that uh thirty percent healthcare. Um. The governor's proposal was at fifty percent. The Senate was at eighty-five. So what we built in, we were. Doing half of the governor's estimate for the prior uh budgets. So it was about twenty-five percent. So we've upped that estimate to the most likely at fifty percent and the optimistic at eighty-five percent. And then we'll see what happens with the House proposal and make further adjustments if needed. So this increased our sources uh to the general fund to three point eight six four million. And then if we. Add all those up, uh we have about three hundred ninety-one thousand of new items. Um that's positive, but because of that carry forward effect of the general fund that where we started the year at one point seven million dollar use. Our total impact at the end of projected at the end of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six would what be one point three million dollars? Would be a use. And again, we are so, we're still working on on all of this and items change as we hear more. You know, we still have state aid, staffing levels, negotiations, the stock, this budget doesn't include any items for negotiations as of right now. Um and then just as a reminder on timeline, um we have our board work session on next Monday. And then there is a following meeting uh work session scheduled for uh the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, if we need that. Are there any questions?
What are the odds of learning anything substantial from the state before our meeting next Monday?
If we get a House proposal. That would shed some more light. Um we will have the revenue consensus, but we don't usually make adjustments in our budget based on revenue consensus. That's what the legislatures use when they're in their um consent, their uh conference committees, that they'll look at that. So if we hear something from the House, I'll definitely work it in. So we have that for Monday. Uh but if we don't, I I don't. I, you know, I'm there, I'm really working to finalize twenty-four, twenty-five budget revision. So we have a good. The starting, we have our second budget revision that'll come also on May nineteenth. So I won't be. Working on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Busy week, huh? Yes, trustee Phelps?
Yeah, I just thank you for this. Um very helpful. Um for planning purposes, um. This foundation allowance number, I understand your reasoning and I understand the the why you, you know, with uh, you know, impact of the staffing and all that. I I just think it's important and I'm not necessarily suggesting a number that we're really deliberate and as accurate as possible with this. We're talking about a nine hundred dollar, nine hundred thousand dollar swing. No one has said there, you know, I I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I want to make sure this is as accurate as possible. Because next week, we're gonna be talking about budget implications and might talk about people's paychecks. And the last thing I want to do is. Unintentionally lowball or you know what I mean, or have an incorrect number. I'm not saying we're doing that, you know. Uh but I just want to make sure we're as dialed in on that as possible. Um and and I understand the need to be conservative. It's just, you know, we have two proposals now in that four hundred range. I understand the caveat. I do. Um I it's it's just hard for me to imagine the final budget that the governor is gonna approve will be a one ninety-six. Um I understand that. I know I keep saying, I understand why you did it. I just want to make sure that when we're looking at this, we are as. Um is is accurate as we can be with the information that we have. So just my two cents.
I'd also like to remind um. John, if you could back up. One more page. I agree with that. That's nine hundred. Um I agree with everything you just said, and I have thought about that as well. And we have had some conversations. The other thing that we don't have built in are negotiations. And so as we have those conversations next week and have the conversation about foundation allowance. We also have steps, just steps alone, um would eat up that nine hundred thousand dollars. That difference between the one ninety-six and the 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 four hundred dollars in a sense.
Would that two hundred dollars, the the Senate proposal, would steps be part of that? I mean.
You can use steps.
So I mean, so that.
So you, yes, you could do that, but remember, we build that in, then we really have to reduce. That foundation, what we can use for everything else.
Sure, but looking into the future, we know we have negotiations coming up that potentially could be used as as part of that. So.
Yes.
Um, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's just a caveat that, yes, we do that three hundred or that, sorry, that one ninety-six. Do we want to make some different assumption with it? Yes, we definitely could. Um but we also, on top of any conversations we have on Monday, we also um as a board. Um um have talked in executive meetings about negotiations and we have to um. Remind ourselves of those conversations.
I I wonder if um there's a a board role in actually advocacy around the the educator. It just seems like it really uh creates a messy situation for the people who are. Whose job is defined by that law and those who are out, because that's winners and losers right there. Um so I just, I guess it's kind of a question. Um maybe that's more at the individual trustee level or would that be a board? I I would support uh the board advocacy committee looking at that. I am gonna be drafting a letter to our uh legislature and um. To give a little bit of the feedback from a district, just in terms of unintended consequences. Of course, we're not against educator pay. Um but it does have some unintended consequences with, as Executive Director Lance talked about, in terms of. Uh how it's defined, the taxes, you know, not being included. And then those that aren't considered educators. Um there's cultural issues that result in a district when you get haves and have nots. Uh and if you Google this in the past, you'll see there's been bus drivers in other districts that are incredibly upset. Because they spend all their time with students and are included in that. Um and um. And then you get your parapros and your, you know, and all those others. And then people that also work hard, that don't spend their time with kids, but help the district run. So while it sounds good and and is good for educators, we want to be able to afford that to all of our employees because they're all valued. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you so much for your great work. We'll look forward to seeing you next week. Okay. And uh now is the last opportunity for uh uh comments from the public. Um do we have any more blue sheets? Uh is there anyone online, Nate? Okay, thank you. Um and any other matters for the goodness of the district? Okay, when with that, at ten oh eight, we are adjourned.